Welcome to the Cochise County Board of Supervisors Work Session Thursday, May 1st, 2025 at 1:00 p.m. Board Supervisor Hearing Room 1415 Melody Lane, Building G Bisbee, Arizona pursuant to A R S 38431.02H. The public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-75130, 888-680-6714, conference ID 4891-49931. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520432-9200 for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform, discuss and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors and public comment will not be taken. Myself, Tom Crosby, I am present. Ms. Gomez, are you present?
I think so.
You are present. And Mr. Antonori is not present. And we have Ms. Tammy Jo Wilkins, we have Stacy, we have Chuck Petusik, we have Steve Parkin, and we have Sharon Gilman. And this is a budget work session to discuss county budget for fiscal year 25, 26, specifically Southern Arizona Communications CCOM and Petrosaki. Ms. Gilman, would you care to?
Sure.
Okay, just to launch.
So, as the board notes, CCOM is a partnership that we have with the other cities within the county, and the county pays a portion, a proportion of the, contributes a great portion to their budget. So, we have Tammy Jo Wilkins here to, she's the Executive Director of CCOM, and she's prepared a presentation to inform the board about the CCOM operations and their budget for next year.
Kim Jo, who did I miss when I introduced everybody that's behind us over there?
Chief Heiser is our Operations Chair for Operations Committee.
Thank you for being here, Chief.
And Jennifer Graham.
Jennifer Graham, you're very difficult to see. Jennifer Graham, our Personnel Director. Thank you very much.
Right?
You bet.
Okay. Thank you for this time today to share with you some stuff about CCOM that we're excited about and for our upcoming budget year. Our monthly incoming calls to CCOM, I put two columns here. For 23, you can see the difference between 23 and 24. Last year, ending calls for service, we totaled 127,405. Within year-end admin calls received into the center of 145,244, and a year-ending 911 calls received into the center of 50,479. That's up just a tad from the year before, and currently, as of Monday, we are at 66,615 with 17,911 calls. So, we're on track to beat these numbers in the next year. Our accomplishments throughout the year, we are actually in discussions right now with Fort Wachuka to have them join us on a part-time basis. We are working on a subscriber agreement and the IGSA as we speak. It looks like if they join us, it'll be about $120,000 in subscriber fees for them to join on a part-time basis coming into the CCOM budget.
And what is IGSA?
IGSA is the intergovernmental service agreement. Thank you, Chuck. Our staffing continues to increase. We started off January with an opening, job opening posted on the county website. We received for the month of January 72 applications. We whittled through that, and we have three that will be starting in the next month, month and a half, with three more in background. Very hopeful by July 1st, we'll be at 19, fully, well, not fully trained, but full-time dispatchers within the center. Six of them will be trainees. January 1st, HR Services transitioned from the city to the county, and that has been a huge success for us. We currently have 11 city employees and 15 county employees with this transition. And then the three that are in background, if they make it through background, they will be hired under the county. We've conducted and participated in a number of training opportunities. We provided those opportunities to staff for mental health training, crisis negotiations training, and communications training officer. We're trying to build up from within. We have changed our standards to make sure that all of our dispatchers are taking that crisis negotiations class because they are the first person that anybody gets on the phone regardless of the situation. On the other hand, it's nice for them to have that extra skill. Work continues on adding capacity to the center. In last budget cycle, we budgeted 130,000 to add four new consoles. We did get those added in November. They are now fully functional. So, we have 10 911 positions within the center with nine that are fully functional with radios. We're working on a new subscriber fee schedule that was actually approved at the last JPA meeting. So, what that means to us is that instead of doing this ratio of portables and mobiles that I can't even explain to you, I apologize, we have tried to make it a lot easier and a lot more transparent for everybody involved, and we pulled calls for service off of Spillman. So, every agency has a number of calls for service in the system. And what we'll do is every three months, we'll look at the last three months of the calls for service in the Spillman system, and then we'll bill them $16 per call. That's how we're figuring out our upcoming subscriber fee schedule. This is not going to go into effect until the next fiscal year, but because we're working on completing new subscriber contracts to go with that so that everybody knows what they're getting when they subscribe with CCOM. We're working on internal policy development and building standards across the county, not only internally but with our partnerships. What that means is everybody's doing everything the same way. When people started joining CCOM, it was piecemeal here and there. For example, Wilcox would do it one way, Bisbee would do it one way, Cochise County would do it one way, Sierra Vista Police would do it one way. Now, we're doing it all the same way. So, I think that that's a huge win for all of us, and everybody knows what the expectation is when they're on our radios or we're receiving phone calls for them. Discussions being hosted with several outside agencies regarding joining CCOM. This is a complete separate county that is looking to join us. As we have more information, we will share that in the months to come. This is also not going to happen overnight because there's a lot of things to work out when it comes to radios and what that partnership will look like.
Which county was that?
Graham.
Great, thank you.
Navigate 360 is now online with all of our Cochise County schools. This was established through a grant that the Sheriff's Department actually found in partnership with the Cochise County School Districts. And now, it's an emergency management system, basically, and it's set up in all of the classrooms so that if there's an emergency, they can hit a button, and we get the notification not only via the computer, but we get an automated phone call if there's an issue there. So, we're doing testing as we speak, but this is online, and all of the schools are on board with it. It's actually a cool tool, if I could ever figure out how to show everybody. So, on our funding model, I separated for fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26 so that you could see what the difference is. The fund balance has been basically the same, and that's mostly because of the unfilled dispatcher positions. So, that fund balance, as we get fully staffed, will probably go down. But the funding model is basically what these partners are paying into the CCOM budget.
Now, I know you talked about Douglas being separate, right? Because they're your backup?
Yes.
And they, do they have, so they take care of all their needs as far as equipment and stuff like that?
Yes.
And it definitely works with you guys, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I can explain a little bit more on Douglas when I get to the grant slide.
Okay.
But yes, Douglas is established as their primary service answering point or public safety answering point, whatever you want to call it. They are our backup. They do have one of our 911 chairs because we are funded for 11. So, if anything happens to CCOM, we can flip a switch or a button or whatever, and Douglas can take all of the calls for us. The only other PSAP in the county is Benson at this time. So, speaking of the grant, we just submitted the State of Arizona 911 Grant for a total of $295,572. This funds the equipment for the 911 consoles, not only for CCOM but for Douglas and for Benson. So, I am the 911 Coordinator for the entire county, and I manage, well, with the help of Dave Kelso, who's amazing, by the way. We manage, we manage this grant and make sure that we submit the bills to the state on a monthly basis for reimbursement. With this grant, we submitted not only for the AT&amp;T equipment, but the remainder of our text-to-911 contract, which expires in September. And then, we did ask for $24,000 in this grant to help us fund a VAP system. It's a, it's a DataMark system that helps with our GIS programs. With our GIS, it's very important for us to keep that up to date because that's all the mapping that goes into the Spillman system and into the 911 Vesta system, and it helps us get our first responders where they need to be in the right place at the right time.
I'm sorry.
PSAP's been for? Public Safety Answering Point?
Okay.
I went old school on you and called it the Primary Service Answering Point. 25 years ago, that's what they called it. So, here's my budget by category. I did put last year and this year requested on here so that you could see the difference. Basically, we've gone up a little tiny bit in personnel. Travel and training has definitely gone up because we added the requirement for crisis negotiations. That's the one area I'm over-budgeted in, if you can believe that with the fund balance. I'm over-budget in travel and training, so we're moving things around. Professional services includes our contract with our CCOM attorney and our, our janitorial services. The utilities has gone up here. Everybody's experiencing that. Our association memberships have stayed the same. Our IT services has gone down just a little tiny bit. Building maintenance has also gone down a little bit. Our legal and our insurance, I'm sorry, the professional services is a couple of different things. The legal and insurance, I put a separate line item on that. Supplies at 170,000 have gone up a little bit. With our supplies and our IT, this year, we've got six computers, desktops or console computers that have to be replaced this year, and then we've got to add some fans to some of our system so that that has additional cost to it. And then capital is our SUA Motorola maintenance of 401,000. So, our, our budget has only gone up since last year about $165,000. And I just wanted to show you an example. This, this is an example of some of the equipment that we have access to, so I can look at this real time and look at how many dispatchers I need to have on the floor at any given moment just to answer 911 or admin lines. This, from, from one side, it's Sunday through Saturday, and then across the bottom, it's from midnight to 11:00 p.m., and it shows you how many I should have answering the phone at any given point. So, at some points, there's two. I've actually seen one on here on a few occasions. In the middle of the day, in the middle of the week, when it's busier, between Monday and Friday, between 8:00 a.m. and about 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night, you see that we should probably have at least four or five. I've seen this go up to 7:00 or 8:00, and this changes on a daily basis. But this is just a screenshot of how we keep track of what's, what our staffing needs are and how we develop our schedule so that we are staffed sufficiently during our busiest times. And that's the end of my presentation. If you have questions, I'm ready.
I'd like to express my appreciation for the city's generous contribution to the program. Well, Supervisor Crosby, Supervisor Gomez, Sharon introduced, you know, the concept, and what we have is two founding principles, and that's Cochise County and the City of Sierra Vista, and then all the rest of the entities, our subscribers that came on after CCOM stood up. As a result, when the budget is built, city and the county basically split, you know, the difference in terms of any shortfalls that the budget might have as a result of not having the revenue come in from other subscribers. So, as Tammy Jo mentioned, we're working with Fort Wachuka right now. We're working with Graham County. Santa Cruz has also expressed interest in joining. So, as those subscriber fees come in as revenue, we're going to see even further stabilization and maybe reduction of county and Sierra Vista contributions going forward. So, and just to follow on that point real quickly, from fiscal year 22, the county's contribution was about 1.17 million, and the city's was 1.027 million. And then, for fiscal year 25, the county's contribution is 1.034 million, and the city's is 964,000. The years in between are very similar in terms of numbers. So, the actual contributions and budget impact, the city and county have been stable this whole time. So, in an era when all these prices are going up, but inflation, the CCOM model has been very good from a fiscal standpoint for both of us. Apologies.
Do you see why you guys look like, did you use more or?
Probably because we probably kept the calls for service. And now, this was worked out by my predecessor, not my predecessor, but predecessor police chief and myself and Tammy Jo's predecessor. And what we did was we looked at it over a five-year period and tried to average it over that five-year period. So, I think we're, Bisbee's like in year three, I think, right now, of a five-year contract with CCOM. So, and plus, if you notice, a lot of these are fire districts.
Okay, right.
Okay, so, and for, this includes both Bisbee Police and Bisbee Fire.
Fire, okay, gotcha.
And Bisbee U.S.
Yes.
Steve, maybe you could share what you're paying for dispatch costs before you joined?
My, my last budget before we joined CCOM is in excess of 200,000.
Wow.
So, that's having my own console, my own employees, my own center.
Right.
So, and quite frankly, I think, and I think I can speak for Mayor Council too, to some degree, the model that we're pursuing here in Cochise County today has been very slowly but very surely catching on all over the country. It doesn't make sense anymore for every, especially in rural communities, every little community to have their own dispatch center. It also helps us with interoperability.
Yes. And then, was Douglas decided about to be on there on your backup because of the population or just because they had something set up and it was just, it worked out that way? I'm just curious.
They, that was actually before my time, but they actually have a call volume that hasn't gone down. They get a lot of 911s from over the border.
Right.
And because they are bilingual, we give, we use them as our language line. So, it's a beneficial partnership for all of us because we know that if something happens with our center, we can go there. Something happens with theirs, they can come to us, and somebody's going to be there to answer the phone.
That's true.
And that's pretty accurate. Their location and proximity to the border, as well as their bilingual needs, have caused them to want to stay, you know, with their own PSAP. But since we have an aid agreement, we can help each other out. Benson is the other community in the county that has not joined yet. They probably will need to join in a couple of years. They have an existing contract for their own PSAP. They won't generate the call volumes to maintain their own PSAP after their contract runs out. So, you'll see revenue similar to Wilcox probably from Benson, and that happens around $100,000.
And more like us if they ever get a fire department.
Yeah. But we also have the private sector as a subscriber as well with HCI, and of course, we have state, federal government as well.
National Park Service is a subscriber, and they pay in $7,500 per year. And then, the Forest Service is entertaining, joining us as a subscriber as well for the same cost.
Okay.
So, Kim, you mentioned here that personnel is a huge success. How was that?
Well, with the transition, I now realize how I inundated the city of Sierra Vista's HR Department with all of my demands, but we are hard to fill. So, having the flexibility with Cochise County HR Department and the ability to do a lot of my recruitment hands-on myself, it's, it's reduced our recruitment timeframe from about six, seven, eight months to two months from date of application to the date of the offer letter, which has moved things along quickly.
Okay. Ms. Graham, did you have any comments about the personnel issues? You can just sit right there and just line.
Very welcome. No, not, none whatsoever. We're happy to serve CCOM, and Tammy Jo and Melissa are a joy to work with, and it was simply a matter of providing them a bit more access than they had previously. And then, I have a staff that's ready and willing to serve. And initially, it was a little bit more work. However, now, it's just flowing. And on May 12th, we'll bring on our second employee that is fully county CCOM, and then, we have, what, three more coming up right after that?
Yes.
And so, it's been very smooth. And as I said, Tammy Jo and her team are great to work with.
Mr. Petusik, did you have any further input on behalf of your Personnel Director? Well, just, just as a matter of historical context, originally, when CCOM was set up, Cochise County had all the administrative functions, personnel, budget, finance, procurement, clerk services, those kind of things, things that CCOM needs. Soon after CCOM stood up and then the Board of Supervisors appointed the sheriff to the board, all of those functions transferred over to the city at that time. So, so we took them on at no cost to CCOM, and I think there's provisions for that in the agreement as well. So, last year, the county administrator, you know, expressed a desire to take on the, the functions, administrative functions again. So, we started with that personnel. I had a very small staff, and my, almost my entire HR staff has turned over here over the last few months. So, it made a lot of sense for us from an operational standpoint to also, to also move that over. So, we still have to do the rest of the admin functions. Hopefully, by June, we'll have changes to the agreement before the board and the city council to take on the other functions. And staff is currently working on that transition. Mr. Heiser, you're over there in the North 40. Would you care to join us or make any comments? I'll give up my chair. You can sit here.
Well, take your seat, sir. Thank you, sir. I just want to say, having been in Tammy Jo's shoes before as the Director as well, the operation is really coming along in a way that's just impressive. I think the model took a heavy lift at first, but now we're there. My department, we are more than satisfied. We're impressed with the service we're getting at CCOM. I just want to emphasize that. And the staffing has been a hard hardship on them. It's great to see that they're getting close to full staffing. That helps, helps with the service delivery. The fact that we're now seeing other counties in Southeast Arizona like Graham County, Safford interested, piquing their interest is, there's a reason for that. This model's working. So, and the budget staying, staying steady. So, it's, I was involved in this budget presentation to you a few years ago. I don't know if you remember. I was the interim Director. It's great to see that this is still being very steady with the budget. So, it's all here.
Thank you, Chief. Senator Gomez, do you have any further comments or questions?
You were talking when we came and visited about eventually, this is going to be self-sustainable, right? And I'm sorry, I forgot. About how many years do you think that will take?
It's minimum, minimum five or six. We've got a lot of work to do on the back end. We're taking baby steps forward with the new funding model idea, which doesn't go into effect until next fiscal year. And then, we're working towards the subscriber agreements being CCOM-specific. So, that's another step in that direction. And then, once we get the subscribers on board and the fees established in a way where we can be fully functional, then we have to think about all of the additional costs for us to become self-reliant or self-sufficient, a separate legal entity is the, the terms that I've been taught. And that, that requires a little bit more of a fund balance. So, I've got some work to do to try to build that back up.
And you just came on board when you came?
It'll be three years in February.
So, you plan to be here for?
I signed my contract for my last five.
Use your hand. Supervisor Crosby, Supervisor Gomez, along those lines, to get to self-sufficiency, there are a couple of things that need to be done. As Tammy Jo mentioned, we'll probably need to take, change the structure of the current agreement and do what A R S calls a separate legal entity. So, that's, that's going to change somewhat the makeup to allow us to become self-sufficient. And then, all of the admin costs that I mentioned that are, that have been done, you know, on an in-kind basis by both the county and the city would have to be absorbed by all the subscribers. So, so we tread pretty lightly there because those will be fairly significant costs. And then, the smaller entities, of course, will have to pay more as well, which will be more of a burden for them probably than it would be for us. But, but that's the reason for, you know, moving slowly on that.
That's all I have.
Professor Casey, how familiar are you with the computer programs that are in use at CCOM, if at all?
I'm familiar with the radio, not the actual program itself, but the level of the IP.
Okay. I, I don't think that I saw, one of the, one of the things that we've, we've looked at in, in all the departments is the, is the cost of the computer programs, isn't that correct? What, where was that broken out in your, in your budget, if you happen to?
The SUA is the Motorola. That's just the radio maintenance. The IT services are the 234,000.
Spillman.
That's Spillman and all of the specialty programs that we utilize.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions. Does anybody else have any more questions or comments?
That's pretty exciting to see the facility and everything that, that you do, and you know how the dispatchers can actually help right away with, you know, any kind of health issues and stuff like that. It's very, very, it's amazing to be in Cochise County, have that kind of technology and service. So, it's exciting.
It reduces response time. Response time starts when we answer the phone because we have the ability to provide the pre-arrival instructions. So, having that certification, which is at a cost with the, with the training, is part of what brings quality to us.
Right.
And those standards, because the responders in the field love getting the information. Some agencies, just like there was a cat in a tree, and our agency gives you all of the details and then some. So, it's, it's amazing. So it's, it's amazing.
Yeah, very impressive.
George, do you want to cover your funding post? Because we'll, we'll go over that and we'll later take this. Usually, the departments are introducing that.
Oh, okay. Um, so um, I do have a funding request uh, with Miss Stacy here. Um, one of the things that I requested was an admin assistant. With the transition uh, fiscal services from city to county, I quickly discovered that I can't do it all by myself and I need help. Um, so I need an admin assistant to help us with the finances and the recruitment because while it is exciting to see it move forward, uh, it is also time-consuming and it takes me away from some of the other things that I'm doing. And I really need Melissa as my manager to be able to focus on the operations, the day-to-day as to what's going on and, and address those things. So we did request for a admin assistant and five additional dispatchers. Um, the five additional dispatchers is a request um, mostly for the future. If Graham County comes on board, that's going to increase our call volume probably by another hundred thousand a year. And I do need to know that I can staff and manage that before we sign any kind of an agreement with another community to, to join us. So uh, the request, I think, was three hundred and ninety-five thousand?
On three sixty-one one.
Okay, I was, sorry.
Three sixty-one.
Three hundred and sixty-one thousand, yes.
And, and, and those slots are in the budget, but they're not, there, there aren't dollars attached to them. And the reason for that is because uh, we're currently under the twenty authorized positions right now. Uh, which also generates your fund balance uh, too. So as, as uh, Tammy Jo gets closer to uh, full staffing, we won't see the fund balance generated like we're seeing. But uh, we'll get to the point where we can provide services to outside entities. It's really exciting that, you know, the vision of doing the whole county and then moving outside the county is actually occurring as we, as we speak. Uh, but uh, the uh, the JPA has uh, instructed Tammy Jo that in the event that she gets to twenty uh, dispatchers and full staffing and requires more to bring that to the board and then the board would, would approve it. There should be plenty of room in the budget to, to handle that at that time.
And when do you think Graham would come on? Are you going to be thinking in the next, in next fiscal year? Possibly?
Uh, oh, I think there's a lot of technicalities to be worked out.
There is. So if Graham County comes over as a whole, which is uh, Graham County Sheriff, Thatcher Police and Fire, Pima Police and Fire, and Safford Police and Fire. If they come over as a whole, it would be a heck of a lot easier than if Safford came on by themselves. Uh, because we'd have to work on infrastructure because uh, the county, Graham County owns the radio towers. So.
Does that include a lot of Indian reservation also?
Uh, part of San Carlos, I believe, but they have their own.
They have their own.
Uh, dispatching, so they would not be part of the Graham County if they came over.
They would remain separate.
For now.
Take a joint.
Yeah. We can take over.
Yeah. Why not start on the same goal? Any further questions or comments from attendees?
I think with the um, discussions with Fort Huachuca and the feds at this point, um, their participation, the San Carlos reservation probably wouldn't be too far off. Because we're, we're paving the way there where nobody else has.
So it seems.
Yes.
Okay. Now, are there any further questions or comments? If not, then we will prepare to adjourn and I noticed against several meetings. So if not the regular Board of Supervisors meeting to say that's the next meeting, then which meeting would you like to say is the next meeting?
I'd say.
Regular?
Probably library, jail, and flood, and regular, all together.
We'll, we'll just say library.
Okay.
Okay. So our next meeting will be the Library District meeting, which will be Tuesday, May sixth at ten AM. And I thank everybody for attending. This meeting is adjourned.